All right.
Mine says 1:30.
Okay, good afternoon, welcome to our June 13th meeting. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we don't have any presentations today, so we're gonna go straight to you. Mr. Engineer, Paul?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have a number of items today for your consideration. The first is Resolution 23-788 to authorize a purchase from Kaleida Truck Equipment, Inc. for crane mechanic service body and equipment outfit in an amount not to exceed $148,000 through December 31st of 2023. 789 is to authorize the county auditor to pay by warrant $108,484.30 to the city of Brookville for permissive tax funds for the 2021-2023 East Westbrook Road resurfacing project. 790 is to revise the prima facie speed limit on Social Row Road from Sheehan Road to State Route 48 in Washington Township in accordance with Section 4511.21 of the Ohio Revised Code. 791 is to advertise for the North Gettysburg Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the city of Dayton at an estimated cost of $1,700,000. And then we have a couple amendments to the LPA federal local let project agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to revise federal funding allocations. 792 is Social Row Road Phase 1 project, and 793 is a Social Row Road Phase 2 project.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff, Michael?
Thank you Commissioners, under the County Sheriff we have Resolution 794 authorizing the purchase from Insight Public Sector, Inc. for equipment for Flock Software Subscription Project in an amount not to exceed $185,000 through August 1st, 2025. We also have Resolution 795, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant for the Regional Agencies Narcotic and Gun Enforcement Rains Task Force in an amount of $36,686.79.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on June 6, 2023. Resolution 796, approval of bills. Resolution 797, approval of travel and expenses. Resolution 798, approval of personnel actions. All three of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services, Tyler?
Good afternoon Commissioners, we have several resolutions for you today, beginning with 799, which authorizes a price agreement with Core &amp; Main for ductile iron and pipe fittings for the Environmental Services Department through June 30th of 2024 with options to extend. Resolution 800 approves a Courthouse Square vendors license agreement for rental space on Courthouse Square for BB&amp;B Delicious Foods through December 31st, 2023. Resolution 801 authorizes a participating addendum to the NASPO Value Point Agreement with Corporate Travel Management North America Incorporated, also known as CTM, for travel management services through March 31st, 2025 with options to renew. Resolution 802 solicits bids for the water meters and repair parts price agreement for the Environmental Services Department. Resolution 803 solicits requests for qualifications for emergency water equipment storage. The next two resolutions authorize intergovernmental agreements. The first is 804 with the Dayton Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year 19 State Homeland Security Program Grant Funds. And 805 with the Dart County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year 20 State Homeland Security Program Grant Funds. And the last two resolutions authorize change orders. The first is 806 with Starko Incorporated Mechanical Contractor for the JL HVAC renovation project by decreasing the original amount by $5,467 for a revised total of $2,186,508.86. And the last resolution is 807 with Ohio Valley AV for audiovisual equipment and installation for the Madison Lakes Training Center renovation by adding $2,366 to the original amount for a revised total of $70,550.66.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's very rare, isn't it Tyler, that we have a decrease in the amount of a project, especially lately?
Indeed.
Yes, and we're really looking forward to what's going on at Madison Lakes. That'll be nice for everybody, every department will be able to use that, so we're really looking forward to that. Okay, Environmental Services?
Good afternoon Commissioners, we have two resolutions for Environmental Services. Resolution 808 to accept the easement deed and improve an agreement with PF2 for sewer lines in connection with the Woodman Dorothy Siphon Project and record the same. Resolution 809, accept the subdividers contract from Gilligan Company LLC for the Dunkin' Donuts development.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jerry?
Thank you, we have a couple resolutions today. Resolution, under Human Services Plan Development, 18, the Ohio Children's Trust Fund to serve as coordinator for the Western Ohio Regional Prevention Council in an amount of $1,112,510 through state fiscal year 2025. Resolution 811, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for funds to manage and administer the homeless management information system in an amount of $240,525. We also have authorization for delegation of activities and agreements. 812, St. Vincent de Paul for emergency shelter services in an amount not to exceed $200,000 of ESG CV funds through September 30th of 2023. And then 813, so to St. Vincent de Paul for emergency shelter diversion services in an amount not to exceed $68,167 of fiscal year 2020 ESG funds through December 31st of 2023. Under Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution 814, which is to authorize an agreement with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Medicaid to establish terms, conditions, and requirements governing the administration and the use of financial assistance received and used by Job and Family Services Department. And lastly, 815 is authorize an Ohio data sharing and confidentiality agreement with Core Data Healthcare Innovations, Inc.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry, on 815, I know that we've talked a lot about sharing data and confidentiality. I mean, are we getting to a better place that departments are gonna be able to do that in Ohio?
I think we are getting to a better place, and we're actually adjourned on an agreement with the Hamilton Department of Job and Family Services, so their child welfare agencies are able to use the portal for this data. So I would say, yes, it's improving to be able to access data. But you're only able to access the data that is Montgomery County for us, so that's also good. And then you had also asked about Freedom Schools, and so Jessica shared with me that they're looking at serving up to 530 students this year, this summer. And the Freedom School sites are Fairview, EJ Brown, Decca Prep, Grace United Methodist Church, Louise Troy, and Trotwood.
Okay, great, I know we've been asked to come to a few of those this summer and do her ramay, and yeah, that'll be fun. Okay, great, thanks. Business Services, Chris?
Thank you Commissioner, under Business Services, I have one resolution for you today, Resolution 816. amend the agreement with Dell Marketing LP for annual licensing for various BCC departments by adding $95,904.60 to the original amount for a revised total of $246,771.89 and extending the term through June 14th, 2025.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And under County Commissioners, we have 817, which is to approve petition for annexation of 86.248 acres, more or less, in Butler Township to the city of Union in accordance with Section 709.22 and 709.03 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, I see our union friends here, John, thank you all, and we're looking forward to more activity in Union. Thanks, thank you. Okay, we don't have any citizens signed up to speak, so back to you, Michael?
Thank you Commissioners, I want to remind everyone that we have two fatherhood events this weekend. Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 is our We the Fathers banquet in Montgomery County at Sinclair's Conference Center, located at 444 West Third Street in Dayton. We will have inspirational speakers, we're gonna have a buffet, live band, Father and Son Child Fashion Show, all sponsored by our community partners and our partners at Clothes That Work. So this is gonna be a fantastic event, we look forward to having the whole community out, and it should be great for our fathers and for the children that will be accompanying them. Tickets are $40, it's a great event for the entire family. For tickets, call Fatherhood Director Mike Newsome at 937-225-4759. Again, Fatherhood Director Michael Newsome at 937-225-4759. Then on Saturday, so we've got the banquet Friday night. Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we have our Celebrate Fatherhood Free Picnic at Levitt Pavilion. Now I know some of you remember for years we have had this at Island Park. This year we will be at Levitt Pavilion, so please note the change. Levitt is located at 134 South Main Street in Dayton. There's gonna be free barbecue, you can't turn that down any kind of way. Resources for families, kids, games, live music, and more. So please come out, enjoy the time, both Friday and Saturday is Fatherhood Weekend. It's Juneteenth, most of us have an extra day off, so please come out and enjoy. Thank you Commissioners.
Thanks, Michael. So, this weekend is about celebrating dads, don't forget, Sunday is Father's Day. And I like that we're always able to combine our fatherhood events with Father's Day. So while it is about celebrating dads, moms are welcome too, to both of these events, and of course, the children. We hope that we have many people there, and you know, we as a county focus on fatherhood and make an extra effort with our programs because we know that dads are critical to our children's social and emotional development. And these events really help foster a good father and child relationship. We have, at the event on both days, partners that will be there, and we'll have tables sponsored by other partners. And one of the things we also focus on every year with fatherhood is our returning citizens that are working with our Office of Reentry. You know, we know a lot of those fathers have not had a great relationship oftentimes with their children, and so we really encourage them to come out and be a part of it. We're so happy that we can offer these events. And Michael talked about the banquet a little bit and the fashion show with fathers and their sons, and that is always one of the best parts of the banquet, I think. And when our returning citizens are part of that too, it's really special because they've got their great suits from Clothes That Work, and it's just, it's really meaningful. So I'm really happy that we are able to invest in that, Michael, thank you. And so then also, with the picnic on Saturday, it's gonna be a big day at the Levitt, a big day, because that evening, so the picnic will be during the day, that evening is the Juneteenth concert that we have been able to sponsor for the last few years, we being Montgomery County. And that concert, Saturday evening, 5:00 to 8:30, and it's featuring a Grammy Award-winning rebirth brass band. And so it's jazz, funk, soul, R&B, and the band is rooted in New Orleans tradition, so it should be a lot of fun. Again, this is also free, as most Levitt, almost all the Levitt shows are. And so people can bring blankets and chairs. And you're also, the nice thing about the Levitt is you can bring a picnic, you can bring outside food, you can bring outside drinks. And so they also ask for no glass. But it's always a great event, and we're happy that we can sponsor it, especially on Juneteenth weekend.
Well, and Commissioners, I'd like to just thank you, you know, fatherhood, reentry. We'll have another big announcement coming up on the fatherhood grant, that we're working on the logistics of finishing up. So, you know, it takes that support, the concert, so thank you for your support. It doesn't happen without the three of you giving us the support we need to move it forward, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'm very sorry, I will not be at the concert, because many of you remember Charlie, my Commission Assistant, he's getting married Saturday night, so I will be at his wedding. Yeah, so I will miss it, but I know the three of you will have it under control, Michael will be on the, on the t-shirt. Shooting those out. Shooting out t-shirts of people.
I have been voluntold.
Yes. Take lots of pictures for me, all right, thanks. Commissioner?
I want to remind everyone that June is National Foster a Pet Month. Our Animal Resource Center is looking for foster families to open their hearts and homes to dogs, if only for a short while. Now, see, I knew this was gonna happen one of these days. I'm sorry, I lost my dog a couple weeks ago.
Daisy.
My baby.
Yeah, we all need Daisy.
Yep. Foster homes give dogs a comfortable environment to decompress while we learn more about their personalities and behavior. Finish it, jeez. Okay.
She wasn't quite finished, I'll finish it for her.
Sometimes one little thing can trigger it.
I know.
Ah, it's awful.
Fostering dogs, and we don't through the ARC, but other of our partners in the community, you can also foster cats. But fostering dogs is great because the foster parents can learn about the dog's personalities, whether or not you have other pets, whether they socialize with them and with children. So it helps us make better matches between the dogs and our adoptive family. So if you want to learn more about becoming a foster parent for a dog, go to mcanimals.org and visit the Get Involved page.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And the furry members of our family, as much joy as they bring to us, obviously, when they have to leave us, it brings us all families sadness, so we've been in your shoes, Judy. All right, also, this week, there's a great chance for kids to get involved in our sustainability efforts. Every year, we have a Montgomery County environmental calendar, and there's a contest, and that contest is opening. It is available to kids in grades K through 12, and it is incredible. We go, we just, it was just a few months ago, I think, that we went and saw last year's winners. It is incredible, the artistry and creativity of the youth, and there are awards for their schools, which is really cool as well. And so the students are asked to create an original piece of art that supports one of the selected themes. And here are the themes. The first one, "Don't Let the Fat Berg Bite." Now, I'm really interested, I do not know what a fat burg is, but it'll be interesting to see how the students interpret that one. "Keep fats, oils, greases, and wipes out of our pipes." And the recycling theme, "Be a Neighbor Who Cares, Keep Montgomery County Beautiful." So the entry deadline, you have plenty of time, is September 29th, so that's three months. Winners can receive between $250 to $2,500, so this is no small amount of money for their school. And anyone interested, and there's usually, I don't know how many total, but the winners, there's a couple dozen winners when it's all said and done. But anyone interested, you can find more details and an entry form under the Education and Outreach tab under our Environmental Services at mcohio.org. So get out your creative juices, and let's see what they come up with. So that's what's happening starting this week.
And that's a great calendar, we all use it, it's, you know, anymore, it's like we don't use as many calendars, but I always keep that one at home because, you know, it's just, it's got great art from our students in our community. That's a good calendar. One thing I wanted to add was last night, Commissioners and I were able to go to the Clothes That Work kickoff. Anniversary, 25 years, which is hard to believe, because I remember when they started, Judy, we were...
We were children.
We were children, but, you know, we were both working here at the county, and some of our friends started that. And it's just great to see 25 years, but the big thing we were celebrating yesterday is their new big vehicle. It looks great, full of clothes, and what they're gonna be able to do is take that out to different hiring events, to some of our locations, maybe out at West Town, and to other parts of the county, maybe up to employers that are having hiring fairs. So it's loaded with great clothes for people that are looking for a career. We were really happy that we were able to, as a county, we were able to support the purchase of that. And the man that, the company that knows Tyler, you probably know the name, I can't think of it, that's done all of our vehicles, the work force and the animal research, the designer. He was there last night, and he was just very thankful to us and for sharing their name with other places. And so it was great, Clothes That Work continuing to grow, and don't forget their boutique.
Well, I thought it was amazing that they said, since they've started, they have helped more than 39,000 people over 25 years get a new set of clothes and a new image, and they anticipate 500 people in the mobile in the first year. That's how, that's what they're planning for. And then I thought that the quote that she had about a recent reentry individual, a man who had just gotten a suit, and when, I hope I get the quote right, he said when he looked, when he looked in the mirror, he finally saw the man that he felt like inside. He'd never in his whole life, it was really touching.
It was very touching.
And it was one of our recent graduates of a cohort, and we know how that, how they feel when they get all dressed up for their interviews and then for their graduation. And clothes can make a difference in your whole attitude of how people view you and obviously how you view yourself and what you're capable of.
I know you've all been to one of our graduations, and when you, so we greet the men and women that are going through the reentry office at the beginning, and then we try to, every time we can, go to their graduation. And when you see the transformation, and it is exactly that, it's not just their clothing, but it's their confidence.
Yeah.
And they get up and they do their whole presentation and graduation, and it's just, it's great. And so that partnership with Clothes That Work has been very important for the Office of Reentry and so many others, our workforce development and others that we send there. But it's a great place, so that's it. Okay, our next meeting will be right here next Tuesday on June 20th.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we do have a viewing on the Wanger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. Run, 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 get out of here. You know, the thing is, they've never seen how exciting the viewings are, because they always rush out on us. See ya, thanks. Bye, thank you. Bye, John.
You missed one the other week.
Two, right?
Yeah. Remember the one 4:15?
Right.
Couple weeks later, we got out of here, 4:15. Were you weren't here?
I wasn't here.
Oh, you're right.
All right.
So Commissioners, yes, we have a viewing for the Wanger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project, and our project manager on this one is Cameron Spear, and she'll be giving a presentation.
Cameron?
Good afternoon Commissioners, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen of the public. On behalf of Montgomery County Engineer, I'm Cameron Spear, and today I'll be presenting to you our Wanger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. There we go. So just an overview of where this project is located. It is located on Wanger Road between Hope Road and Union Boulevard. And more about the general location, it's just west of Englewood and north of I-70. Zooming in on the project, we can see that there's a residential road to the west, Hall's Drive, as well as a shared use path and pedestrian bridge south of the project. But that shared use path and pedestrian bridge will not be impacted by this project. Some details about the existing structure, it was built in 1988, and there has been no rehab since the original construction. The bridge itself is a single-span pre-stressed concrete box beam spanning 39 feet over Moss Creek, and this structure carries two lanes of traffic, one going east, one going west, for a total deck width of 32 feet. The scope of the project is a complete superstructure replacement of the non-composite box beams with a composite box beam design, as well as patching of the existing abutments, some improvements to the rock channel protection, and some minor roadway profile work and upgrading the guardrail. So here's some pictures of the bridge as it is now. The first picture, we can see the structure from the roadway going east, and then the second photo is a profile view of the bridge from the south looking north. Now getting into the condition of this bridge and part of the reason why we want to replace it, first looking at the drainage system. So this bridge utilizes the over-the-deck drainage method, has two major components, the steel drip strip as well as a waterproofing membrane applied to the exterior of the fascia beams. And we can see here that the drip strip is, has reached the end of its useful life, probably exceeded it. It's completely rusted, the whole length of the strip on both the south and north edges. And we can see several locations of perforations on both the south and north edges. In addition to the drip strip, we can see that the membrane itself is patching, it's worn away in several areas, and even in this first photo, we can see it's actively falling off as well. Here is the condition of the abutments, so the abutments themselves are in pretty good condition. They're rated a seven at our most recent inspection. However, in order to preserve the condition of the substructure, we do want to go in and address some of the delamination that we've noticed. So these areas will be removed, patched with new concrete, and then all of the exposed concrete surfaces of the substructure will be coated and sealed. Now getting into the beams themselves, this is where we see most of the deterioration. These are all images of beam number two, which is by far the worst. We see areas of delamination here in this first photo, active spalling in the middle, as well as, in the final photo, we see exposed rebar, or sorry, exposed prestressing strands and other areas of spalling in that joint. Other beams, not as bad as beam number two, but still in concerning condition. We have beam three just adjacent to beam two, again, in that joint between beam two and three, we see that same spalling. And then on the other side of the structure between beams six and seven, we have the beginnings of that spalling, we have some exposed prestressing strands there as well. And this kind of deterioration is common for non-composite superstructures of this type, so in replacing this bridge with the composite superstructure, we hope to mitigate this type of deterioration in the future. Now going into the right-of-way, there are nine property owners adjacent to this project, seven of which will not be impacted in any way by this, by the construction. However, we do have one temporary right-of-way and one utility easement to talk about a little bit more. So first looking at parcel 2T, this is the temporary. This, again, is located northwest of the structure, and this parcel is necessary for the contractor to have access to the structure, the abutments, and actually performing the work that needs to be done, as well as replacing the guardrail and the grating of the shoulders that go along with that. We have noted that this is a farm, farming property. You can see here that we have called out the edge of crops, and this has been confirmed as of last month. We went out and resurveyed everything, and our temporary right-of-way will not impact that, the crops here. And this is a view of that parcel from the roadway looking out, and again, you can see that edge of crops and then the guardrail and the access point that we will be utilizing. And this is a view of that parcel from the roadway looking out. And again, you can see that edge of crops and then the guardrail and the access point that we will be utilizing. Um, the second parcel is the utility easement, parcel seven U. This is located southeast of the structure. Primarily, this easement is necessary to deconflict the overhead electric wires so we can actually construct the superstructure. But also, um, the posts in this location are right behind the guardrail. Um, so we're hoping to move those posts away from the roadway in order to construct the guardrail. But also as, to enable the guardrail to perform as designed in the event that it is struck, it needs to be able to deflect and have that area to do so. And here's a photo from the road looking at that parcel. The cost breakdown of this, of this project, all of the design was done in-house by a bridge engineer team. The right-of-way has yet to be determined and the construction comes in at slightly less than three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, and the engineer's office has obtained an LTIP grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for this project. And the project schedule, uh, we actually concluded the design phase as of May this year. Um, the right-of-way phase is set to begin next month in July and take about six months. And we hope to advertise and award this project early in two thousand twenty-four, next year, and go to construction the following spring. And due to the geometry of the superstructure and taking into account the traffic, we will be utilizing a roadway detour for thirty days of this project. And the detour routes will go, um, utilize Hope Road, National Road to the north, and Union Boulevard to the east. Um, however, Halls Drive to the west will still be accessible, as well as the church and Dieter Drive from the east, those will still be able to get to. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
I have no questions.
Is it actually in Clayton?
It, it is, yes. The structure itself is.
You said west of Englewood and I'm like, well, that would be Clayton, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
For the traffic, that's, that's quite a busy thoroughfare along the pass called Road. Have you, where are you, uh, where are you sending it from? St. Melon Avenue or Forty-Nine? If you're going all the way up and then coming down.
All the way to National.
If you want to come back down to,
Kroger.
Towards, towards Kroger, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so if they're utilizing Winger Road to get to Kroger to the east, they would be going up Hope Road, west on National, then south.
And down, yeah.
Or like most projects, if they find an easier way from where they happen to be, then they, they find it.
Well, there won't be for Dennis Lieberman, but for everybody else, there will be, but.
You think he can find his way around?
He can find his way around, but that's his route to Kroger. But, um, yeah, so.
Hopefully thirty days are okay.
Yeah, he'll be fine. Um, that intersection though, it already is a nightmare. So this is gonna be done before schools?
Spring, in the spring next year.
Okay. Well, because Clayton's talking about what they're gonna do at that intersection, Winger and Hope as well, because it is a nightmare. It's a four-way stop and it can be like how the one down that you did the roundabout. And so they've actually talked about a roundabout there. I know, you led the way. So I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen there, but it is a bad intersection. Just, we'll deal with it. It was only thirty days.
We do have room to flex in this schedule. Um, this is early in the construction, so if needed or required to, we can always push farther into summer to.
The schools out.
School traffic as well, yeah.
Maybe, maybe, I mean.
We like to get bids early in the year.
I know. Yeah, I agree. I mean, these have been done clearly. I'm not driving over that bridge anymore.
It's not gonna fall apart.
I don't go to Kroger.
Commissioners, have we explained to you what a composite box bridge is?
I know what it is from being on Clayton Council, but I don't know if others do.
Well, it's, it's basically, we, we put a concrete deck over the top of the pre-stressed concrete box beams. Uh, keeps the water out of the joints between the bridge, the beams better and so forth. And it's connected by bar, re-bars that come out of the box beams, so, and it acts together with the box beam to carry the load.
So it'll be good for how many more years when it's all fixed?
The useful life estimation for this kind of structure is seventy-five years, I believe?
Seventy-five or fifty?
Seventy-five from when it's fixed or seventy-five from when it began?
We haven't, we just started doing the composites recently, so we really don't have history, but, but we think they'll last a lot longer than that.
Right.
We thought the box beams would last fifty, fifty years and some of them are not lasting.
Right.
Even forty years, so.
The very first composite bridge we did in the county though, it's totally different now, I know that, but it was over there in Clayton. And it, within maybe fifteen, twenty years was already going bad. Not, it wasn't one of yours, but. Maybe it was though, because Joe Litzen was involved.
No, please.
Uh, like a fiberglass composite material, not a, this is what we refer to. The reason why they call it composite is because the beams are acting with the deck and that is, uh, the material itself is a composite. It's like fiber reinforced polymers instead of concrete.
But there was an experiment at the time.
No, I remember that, yeah. Well, I mean, I'm glad it's come a long way since then. Um, but yeah, it's kind of, and that's how you can do it in such a short period of time, right? I mean, shorter than normal.
Well.
Isn't it? I know.
Not, not, we have to put the deck on. It's, it's a little more than actually, it was, it was just, the only way I was doing just box beam with asphalt surface over the top, waterproofing so forth.
Thanks. Thank you. We'll see you next week, right?
Thanks, Cameron.
Next Tuesday we're gonna do it again.
Right. And no action is needed.
Not today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.